With the planning board meeting of the second of April, 2025, we'll start with Roll Call. Brian Falcone here, Jen Bluestein.
Here.
Alden Clark.
Here.
Charlie Pomassano.
Here.
David Pennington.
Here.
Rick Tinker.
Here.
Jack McCarr.
Here.
Matt Heffron.
Here.
Rare full house. Good person. Congratulations to all of you. We have three public hearings on the agenda tonight. We're going to start with five seventy, five seventy-two.
And they have actually requested, this is late today, so do update the planning board, but they had asked for a continuance until the next meeting, which is the S sixteen. And that's primarily because they have an adjustment they have on the plan with the Conservation Commission, which always better have consistent plans. So while there are a few other things that we were talking about, important details on for the planning reason their side and conditions. It just made more sense to continue and have everything aligned. So they've asked for a continuous P sixteen.
Well, I guess we, I'll ask for a motion to move continuance.
I'll move that we continue the all items for five seventy, five seventy-two Merrimack Street to be continued to the next meeting, April sixteenth, sixteenth.
Second. We can do this through hands tonight. All open favor. Move on to three nine fifty-seven Merrimack.
Evening Chairman Cooper. For the record, nineteen thirteen B Card Street or names for free. River. I'd like to represent Rene Bernard, who's here in the third row of the sweater. He's the owner of the property at, I think forty-one, forty-three, or forty-five. He's at the corner of Green Street and Merrimack. Chong on the screen on left-hand building. Rene's been there for about twenty-plus years. And he owns the vacant lot. That's the subject of the public hearing tonight at forty-nine fifty-seven Merrimack, the former Gibbs Gas Station. I've been working with Rene for more than, I think, ten or twelve years, trying to get this project over the finish line. Think we've done three pre-application conferences in the last sixty-seven years before the planning board. We've had a number of probably more personal challenges to get this where it needs to be, which is in front of you in a public hearing. And in front of the other land use boards that are reviewing this project. So what I'm going to do tonight, I've got two other members of the design, really the members of the design team, Scott Brown from Scott Brown Architects. He's doing the architectural work at the project for the building design. And Steve Sawyer is here from Millennium Engineering. And I'll have them both present a few of the slides regarding the architectural elevations in the program as well as the civils or the site plan. So just before that, we go to the next slide. That's the design team. Next slide. Thanks, Andy. Next slide, please. I'm just going to give you an overview of sort of the the goals, design goals for the project in the first slide. Yep. And how we approach the design of this building over the last ten years. We're in front of you folks for site plan approval and I believe four special permits. One for mixed use in the building, number two for the additional height of the building. I think the building is forty-six or forty-seven feet, which is only allowed with a special permit from the planning board. We're also seeking relief under the intermodal transportation improvement on in the off-street parking requirements to have the commercial parking requirements for the ground floor use of the building. To be located in probably the municipal parking garage, but we know those those are not reserved spaces. We're we're seeking to utilize the fund and the special permit to meet our our parking requirements. Then lastly, we have a special permit also before you that are listed there under the Historic Commission. We went to the commission on the twenty-seventh of February for their advisory review of the DOD requirements. And I believe that's the fourth special permit that will ultimately be issued by the planning board. And we've also been on the fifth of March for our initial consultation with the Affordable Housing Trust. We are going back to the trust next Wednesday to continue that conversation about the inclusionary zoning requirements for the affordable units that would be in the project. So I'd like to just hop into the next slide to talk about our project goals. Clearly in our mind, this is again a long-term objective of this this project design. This is really about strengthening and continuing the revitalization of Merrimack Street Board. This project obviously is a big gaping hole on that side of the block between Tikkumet and Green Streets. So we're really trying to recapture and reestablish the street wall that used to be here to see in the in the package in the project narrative as well as a slide, a few slides from now. There was a pretty strong street wall of buildings, not only on this site, but in that corridor previous to the urban renewal efforts that cleared this site in the eighteen sixties to to put in the the gas station and the auto repair building that's still on site today. So it's again about reestablishing the street wall, activating the street with brown floor commercial uses, adding in pedestrian amenities that are that are pretty standard fare and typical in downtown Newburyport. Period lighting, the seating, the the brick sidewalks, the street trees, and obviously having a high-quality building here that's mixed use. Next slide, please. So in looking at the design approach, we really have four basic steps. Understanding the existing conditions on this property, looking at, you know, how this property in its existing state fits within its surrounding context of Rene's building next door in the corner of Green Street. Looking at that that wood frame building on the corner of Tikkumet that was elevated probably in the nineteen eighties and that additional store story on the ground floor. And obviously, the former the Bisco biscuit factory that was removed, the Lombardi garage with the vacant lot backing up onto Fallon Lippert's rowhouse open there on Brown Square and Pleasant Street. So really getting a good understanding of how this fits within the block. Looking at the historic context and primarily its pre-urban renewal, what was on the site? And how can we weave it back together in the fabric, running really from Route One all the way into downtown Newburyport? As I said, gateway arterial corridor into downtown Newburyport. And then really third, developing a conceptual building and site plan, bringing it in for pre-application review, and then refining that building and design plan. And continuing to do so as we collaborate with staff, public comment, obviously, the planning board and the other land use committees that we are interfacing with in seeking these special permits. Next slide, please. So looking at the existing conditions, we have almost a half acre. It's about eighteen thousand square feet. There's about a hundred and eighty feet of frontage on Merrimack Street. It's in the V two district, so the the zoning is relatively flexible for the dimensional density and land use entitlements for the property. The existing building on the site has obviously been vacant for several decades. It's used for some passive storage. But it was a former service station with auto repair. This was a gas station. The tanks were pulled quite a long time ago. And it's been used as a surface commercial parking lot for the last five to ten years. Building was originally built nineteen sixty-nine, so it's not a historic structure by any means. And the unique features of the site are obviously it's got this large gap too that should move down that Merrimack Street corridor. Yeah, the street wall is significantly broken with a hundred and eighty feet of nothing. The existing building is about sixty-two feet setback, see it in the aerial image from the street edge. So it's kind of the opposite of of the quality and character of the built environment in downtown Newburyport. This really represents the sort of post-war era being a gas station there. So it's clearly a blighted property with large ground parking lot. There's it's a combination of gravel, stone, and pavement, so it's unsightly as well as being open. It's got a very wide curb guide. Sidewalk is essentially a bituminous pavement, rented even a concrete sidewalk. Streets here. Okay, so you're all familiar with it. Let's look at the historic, sorry, the existing building and then the site. So again, the building's about two thousand four feet, a single story, built nineteen sixty-nine. It's currently vacant. It's got some storage in it. It's not in great condition. It's not going to fall down tomorrow, but it's not high-quality construction. It's not a non-contributing structure from a historic preservation standpoint. Again, this was part of the conversation we had back in February with the Historic Commission in review of the downtown overlay history. It's clearly got an adverse impact, the property, the building, the entire context on the surrounding property values and just the experience of walking that corridor. So we were proof of the demolition of that structure as part of this larger review of the of the DOD on the twenty-seventh of February. Next slide, please. So looking at the site, yeah, we've got about a half acre. It's relatively flat, but it's deceivingly got a two-foot grade change from left to right, from west to east. The high point being the Tikkumet street end. The site drops about two feet to towards Rene's building and it's only color green and Merrimack. There's no stormwater treatment on the site. The soils are very sandy, so there's a lot of infiltration on the site. But there is no stormwater treatment and the zoning, as I said earlier, is pretty flexible in respect to the dimension. It's the end uses permitted in the V two district. Next slide, please. So looking just really from Route One to downtown, it's along that corridor, there's a mix of architectural styles from the early nineteenth century through really the twenty-first century. The building that I participated on with Scott Brown is in the lower right at the corner of Market Street. And the off-ramp in Route One, that's obviously the twenty-first century. But you've got you've got a pretty varied set of architectural styles, building placement, even land uses with mixed-use buildings, commercial parking garage, the civic garage, sorry, civic use and parking garage, stand standalone commercial buildings and residential along that just that short corridor. So that's really the context we're trying to insert this building into and given its relationship closer to Market Square and that end of the corridor. Mixed use really seems like the appropriate land use for that building that we're proposing. Next slide, please. So again, looking back at the historic context, you know, back in the mid-nineteenth century, there were stick frame buildings here, and I think those buildings were there over that hundred-year timeframe before urban renewal. You can see them in nineteen fifty assessors map. The multiple colors indicate the ground floor commercial uses along Merrimack Street, yellow being multifamily. Uses all contained within those three structures that sat on this property. That was all cleared probably in the nineteen sixties to prepare for the gas station in the existing building. So there was a strong, well-defined street wall. Obviously, none of you were surprised to to see that running right from Green Street through Tikkumet all the way up to Route One. Very walkable, very pedestrian oriented in respective activity levels and what was happening on the street and how people were engaged from the sidewalk. Next slide, please. So I'm not going to go through the ten main design goals, but because I've already covered some of them. But this is really an effort to adhere to traditional design principles, similar to what we did down the street on Market Street at the end of that block. Really looking at being careful with the building placement, the massing, the scale, the material, and the design details. And really trying to embrace and enhance the quality and character of the existing historic buildings that we all cherish in downtown Newburyport. We're trying to activate the street again and promote some housing choice. We we are proposing to have up to sixteen units of residential land use above the ground floor for sixteen units. There would be, they're relatively small in the proposal, about a thousand square feet per unit. So there would be a requirement if there are sixteen units here, which is how we designed the project, it would be two affordable units out of the sixteen. So a combination of them, at least in this proposal, they're relatively small and there is this affordability requirement. It really will be a mix, even on the different product in downtown Newburyport, give back there are that many units in the building. We are trying to obviously provide adequate parking and meet the parking requirements for those residential units. So we came up sixteen based on our ability to protect parking behind the building. Nobody wants to see it. But we have to meet the minimum parking requirements in at least the residential units. That's what we've done with the twenty-five spaces in the rear of the property. And lastly, I'd say of putting those goals into smaller buckets, it's really about being sensitive to the streetscape improvements. Again, the wider brick sidewalks, the street trees, the period lining, the seating, and all the texture and interest that comes with the the streetscape along Merrimack Street and integrating this property more like Market Square than further out from the downtown. So we did look, next slide, character defining features. It was an interesting inventory. We did this probably a year ago in trying to work out the design details of the building. And Scott can speak a little more when we look at the elevations. But we we canvassed a lot of the downtown to really get a sense of storefront designs, blazing patterns, the entrances, the signage, the openings, the windows, doors, balconies, terraces, the the railings, the metal, the materials, the the bricks, the mortar joints. All of that is really important to make this building, in our minds, successful and fit in, not not trying to replicate what's here, but pay homage to the design details that that really make Newburyport special. Next slide, please. So the real challenge for us was to incorporate some of these character-defining elements of Newburyport, particularly the downtown, into the building and site design. So what we're presenting here in our application and tonight is essentially a thirty-two thousand square foot four-story building. It's mixed use with about twenty-five hundred square feet of ground floor commercial space. We do have that central entrance with the canopy defining the main entrance to the building. Again, the grade change moving from left to right presents challenges for what will ultimately be about twelve, twelve-hundred-and-fifty square feet, which is relatively small in commercial space on that ground floor, again, because we're accommodating the parking on the back of the building, which is penetrating the back of the building. You'll see that on the site plan. The commercial space here is not not overly large. We 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 haven't got an easy ability to incorporate entrances into those two spaces without centralizing it in the middle of the building because of the one-foot grade change either down on the right-hand side near Tikkumet or going up a foot to the first floor down on the Green Street end of the building. So that's what really drove that that central entrance and then the canopy coming out. We know we're going to need, if the canopy stays out over the sidewalk, we know we're going to need an easement from the city council to accommodate that. So if that wasn't granted for any reason, we we have to pull that back or modify that inside. We're aware of that. So we've we've got lots of design details that I think leave to Scott and Steve. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to to Steve to talk about civil plans. And then Scott can talk a little bit about, again, the program space with the floor plans and the the building design. And then we can also participate in our initial response to the peer review commenters comments. We've also had feedback from staff in the in the couple of months that this has been out there. And more recently, some public comments that were uploaded that we're trying to respond to, we can begin to respond to that tonight with the understanding this is just the opening of a hearing that Andy said. And it would be our intention to have a couple of weeks to respond to whatever questions we can answer, come back next month. So with that, I'm going to ask for the next slide and ask Steve to give us an overview of the site plan.
Good evening, Steve. Sorry, Millennium Engineering. Actually, one item regarding the peer review, I believe, Andy, we got, we've actually run through the peer review process part of the first meeting here. I did, the peer review came back very quickly from the initial submission. We updated plans, resubmitted an updated set a week ago. And we did get a letter back, I believe, from Phil Christensen saying he was, all his comments were reps. So that's that's good news. As far as the site, it's pretty straightforward. We have a twenty-foot drive aisle, you know, on the right side, right side where we enter, enter off of Merrimack Street for parking in the rear. We provide a full twenty-four foot back out with full compliant nine-by-eighteen spaces. You know, a lot of times in urban settings that I've designed is they allow you to reduce it just to the fact that most of the people there, the residents, they understand where they're parking. They know how to negotiate it. So this example, we provided full requirement typical for commercial applications, but these spaces will be designated for the residents. So you can see there is a good portion of them on the are underneath undercover, underneath the podium styled. You can see that dotted line that extends into the parking that that is the building, second story and the building above. There's twelve feet clear from the ground level to the underside of the building there. You can also see in the back or in the back left corner, there is undercover bike parking located in the rear of the property. And then as far as on the streetscape, we're widening the sidewalk, I believe, eight feet at the bump out, nine feet along the majority of the building. One item that doesn't show clearly on this slide is that it appeared, you know, with the entry, it looks as if it's pavement up to the street. That's on the site plan, the updated site plan with comments from the city. It's a dry apron, so the brick sidewalk continues across the entry. So it's a a continuous pedestrian pattern across the across the driveway. As far as stormwater, oh, as far, okay, lighting, sight lighting. So we have a one light on the island, one light on the island, and you can see in those four spaces. And actually, there's a second light that's not shown that is to the left of the dumpster and at the back of those parking spaces there. It's low-level light, low-level lighting, just to provide some ambient light for the the parking in the rear of the property. The dumpster has been moved slightly from this slide. It slid up tight to the right to the property line. It allows a dump truck to pull in and empty the dumpster, leaving space for any cars to pass to the right of it coming in or to the left of it leaving. Or a dump truck height typically range from tended twelve feet. So if it's a larger truck, the only manner to get the to pull the trash would be if it's a front loader to pull in front and then back up, which is fairly common in urban situations, or back in and pull out. But one thing that could be arranged is to ensure that any of the dump trucks, dump trucks that track trucks would utilize or services services site would be under twelve feet. With that, they could pull in and negotiate and make a three-point turn and either they can come in forward and lead forward if the certain size truck was utilized for this that operation. As far as stormwater, actually, let's show the stormwater shown the next next slide. No, it's like, I can go back to that first one. Okay, there we go. Let's see there. All sizable. Yeah, so the as far as the stormwater, there's two small catch basins in the in the rear. You can see, you can see them behind the, it's centrally located inside the parking area. That's collected. This is just showing the grades, the surface, the surface features of it. I don't know if you can, Andy, if you can get the next.
That chart sheet?
Yeah. No, I'm just go back to that. Yeah, we don't have it in this slide deck. But so basically, it's collected in deep some catch basins. All the water is collected. There's three catch basins. There's two behind the building. And then there's one you can see up on the right side of the entry just before it leaves the property, it picks up all the stormwater. It's collected and then conveyed through a water quality unit. You can see that as a structure just before the sidewalk, in the backside of the sidewalk on our property. That is a water quality structure that provides the full water quality treatment, removes all the suspended solids. So it's clean water being discharged to the city system. And from that point, it's routed, connected to the city drains in Merrimack Street. So there won't be any during storm events, it won't be stormwater flow flowing across the sidewalk. Any torrent of water running across the sidewalk in the street is collected and conveyed directly to the system. As far as water, this ample water, right off of water and sewer will be provided right off of Merrimack Street. And I think that that comes, it's not much, really not too much in the site. It's a it's a compact site, urban urban setting. And we've we've done done our best to basically keep it compact. We kept the parking in the rear, kept it safe for negotiating cars entering and leaving. It's definitely for urban residential parking. It's the example room for negotiating negotiating the site and parking. Again, okay, landscape. So let's get there. Two, two street trees. There's some larger trees around the rear, rear of the property. There's not not much opportunity for planting, but in the open areas, we've provided ground cover shrubs and one, two, three, four, five larger trees to to enhance the enhance the landscape on the property.
Great. Thanks, Steve. Good evening. Scott Brown, the architect of the project, and very excited to be here tonight. Next day, it's been a long time. It's taken us a long time to get to this point. This project initially started out, you know, eight years ago with a kind of a rough concept sketch from an architect colleague of Nick and Nick's. And and then it went to immediately to sort of an artist's rendering. And when I first came to the project and and saw that initial concept, I really thought that it was spot-on and entirely appropriate for Newburyport and in this site in particular. So it really has been our job to sort of refine this, bring up the level of detail and and ultimately make it work. So when we first got this project, one of the first things we did is we studied the the building immediately across the street from this forty-four Merrimack, which is a classic sort of New England mill building. And and you know, what this has is has some very, it has some similarities to that building in terms of window patterns, floor-to-floor heights, and even to a certain extent, some of the detail. By the way, I will say that I think what we have here through the refinements we've made, it's the detail is is a level up from what we're seeing at, you know, forty-four Merrimack Street and slightly richer, but not not necessarily over the top. So what we're seeing here is that perhaps most of you are sort of seeing this for the first time. This is an illustration that we put together in the last couple of weeks, perhaps has not been uploaded to the portal. We put this together in response to some comments at the Historic Commission. And the Historic Commission really liked this project. And it's one of the first times where they, in my experience, they've had very little to say to say about it. And but one of the comments or questions they had is was relative to the the overall context of this building, overall, you know, and its relationship to the neighborhood. And we realized like in our in our submission package that we were really sort of lacking that. So we had this put together in order to understand the relationship of this building to the building to the left of it, which is actually owned by our client and the building to the right of it. I think this sort of demonstrates that, you know, what we're doing here really sort of really fits in relative to the abiding, the abiding buildings. So one of the things that you'll notice here is that there is quite a bit of cross slope on this side. You know, when you're out there, it's really deceptive, but you know, essentially from the right, you know, right-hand property line to the left-hand property line, which is immediately to the right of that that building on the left there, which is on the corner, Main and Merrimack, there's almost five feet grade change. And, you know, as a designer, when we're putting a building, the front of a building on a cross slope, it presents a number of challenges and it was a very difficult thing for us. So and it's one of the reasons why this building has sort of a center entrance. Again, this is from the original concept, which I think was spot-on. Because when you have multiple spaces that need to be accessed off the street, you want to be able to access those with one door at grade, and it's really, really an accessibility issue. So that's one of the main reasons why this building certainly has a center entrance, you know, that leads to sort of like the commercial units floor and also leads to the residential units above. Next slide, please. So this is our front elevation. A little closer view of it. And, you know, we have a, you know, center entrance canopy above it, immediately above. So this is our front elevation, we'll closer view of it, and uh, you know, we have a, you know, center entrance canopy above it, immediately above that. Uh, we have uh some Juliet balconies uh for the residential units on the second and third floor. And uh, these are um, really, these decorative railings only come out uh from the building, you know, about twelve inches. On opposite, you know, on the outer end of these buildings, on the building, uh, we have larger balconies, and these are actually. Uh, spaces where somebody can uh walk out on, and I think what we're doing here is very important to provide these. These residential units with some outdoor space. And if we can't provide outdoor space, we need, at least need to make it feel like if they throw the windows open. You know, that they feel like they're kind of outside, so that's what these Juliet balconies. Um, are doing in the center of the building. Again, you know, we have ground floor. So there are two sort of commercial units, right and left, well, one to the right. The center entry dual, one on the left. And uh sixteen residential units on second, third, and penthouse levels, the penthouse has four residential units. And uh, what we're seeing here is all the fenestration at the roof level. Uh, that's for two residential units, there's two residential units in the back. So there is a terrace up there, uh, this building does have a parapet that is in guard rail height. And uh, you know, and that's what we're, you know, doing two things, one to conceal sort of that terrace and also providing. Uh, in terms of overall, overall heights, this is very, very similar to forty-four Merrimack Street. In fact, uh, if we were to measure from basically knee grade to the roof, uh, this is nearly identical. The big difference is this sort of parapet that we're creating, which forty-four Merrimack Street does not have, and again, that parapet is about providing a guard rail. You know, for those penthouse, uh, penthouse units. Uh, so we do have lighting on the building, um, you know, uh. I think we have uh six lights at the second floor, uh, mounted to those brick pillars. Uh, we have uh some uh wall mounted signs, brackets, uh, again, you can see those below. Um, below the lighting, two of those, you know, on, on either side. Next slide, please. So this is the left uh side elevation, uh, this is as you would see the building with your back towards Green Street, looking out Merrimack. Uh, the elevation on the opposite side, which we don't have in this part of this presentation, is, is nearly identical to this. The only difference is uh that, that first floor is a little closer to grade because that's on the upper side. So off to the right there, you'll see those, you know, two balconies that I spoke, spoke of, uh, for the residential units on second and third floor. Uh, they're in a corner, uh, beyond that, you'll see our uh front entry canopy that just extends out over the sidewalk. Uh, in the lower left hand corner, that's the back of the building, uh, that's where the parking area uh is. And um, you know, this has been a challenging site, we've tried to provide as uh much parking as we could possibly, and um. You know, one of the things that we've had to resort to is, is cantilevering the back of the building, or to kind of give enough square footage. Uh, to the residential units above. Um, so because of this, it's hard to sort of do, uh, you know, a traditional looking cantilever. You know, what we've done here is that the front of the building is very traditional, it's a very traditional design to address the street. And on the back of the building, we've taken a slightly different approach, where it's a little bit more, you know, a little bit more modern in its design. Uh, the penthouse units, certain materials, the penthouse units are going to be uh aluminum clad panel product. Uh, and then uh the back of the building, immediately above the cantilever there, that's sort of a more residential uh fiber cement. We do have a number of columns on the back of the building, uh, they're going to be aluminum clad. Uh, we are going to need to have concrete bases on those, you know, we're actually not showing that in this drawing, those concrete bases are. Are going to be necessary in order to protect um those columns from the vehicles. Next slide, please. So back of the building, we can see the parking immediately, immediately bottom of the building, we have a center entrance. Which leads to an elevator and stair lobby for the residential units above. Uh, we have a number of balconies, these are Juliet balconies on the back, meaning that they come out from the building no more than twelve inches, and the idea is that. Doors, these, these residents, residents can throw these doors open, feel like, uh, they can feel like they're outside. Uh, the penthouse on this section of the elevation is held back from the wall below about twelve feet, two feet rather. Whereas in the front of the building, we're, we're pulling it back uh nearly seven feet. Up there in the upper left hand corner, right hand corner, those are uh two balconies, or two of the uh. Uh, penthouse, penthouse units. Next slide, please. So just a couple of sheets showing, you know, sort of the palette of materials that we're, we're using here. Uh, we've got the uh proposing aluminum, uh, aluminum windows, they are all double hungs with, with simulated divided lights. Uh, we're proposing a uh water struck historic brick, which is the same brick that's, you know, essentially on just about every masonry building. Uh, here in Newburyport, very, very New England thing to do is to use water struck brick. Uh, we have a um cast stone base, we're proposing cast stone for the lintels and sills. Uh, you know, it's a great looking product, it's come a long way uh over the years, but really the primary reason we're using is that. Uh, we've seen a couple of projects. One of them uh is, you know, Nick just spoke about earlier, you know, at the bottom of Market Street where. The granite is actually spalling and failing, and um, you know, we haven't seen that, that won't happen with the cast stone, so we want this to look great. We kind of hold up um for the long term. You know, on the, the right, right side there, you know, you know, we have some images of what those aluminum columns, you know, would look like, and we have some. Uh, you know, images of the siding we're proposing to use, also some imagery of uh. The sign brackets that we think would be in this building. Next slide, please. So this is our ground floor plan, like I said, that we have two, two commercial units used to be determined. Um, you know, I know we're showing retail here, I particularly don't think that's a particularly great fit for this site, you know, in part because I don't think it's a lot of. Pedestrian traffic, perhaps with this building, you know, it, it might, you know, Nick has spoke about reactivating the sidewalk here. Uh, that's certainly help. Uh, center, you know, we've got a center entry here, some lobby which leads to sort of two commercial spaces, we have a lobby in the back. And located in the residential units, and two sort of knee grist stairs, you know, at either end. Next slide, please. So our second and third floors are identical, uh, you know, we have three stairs in the building. Uh, which is perhaps a little bit unusual, but we've provided those, you know, three stairs, particularly the center stairs, in order to kind of give us a little bit more flexibility. You know, with the floor plan, you know, in particular, in a minute, you'll see what the penthouse looks like in terms of the. Floor layout, and you can see that this putting the stair in the middle actually makes the penthouse layout a little bit efficient. But again, you know, a total of six residential units on the second and third floors, uh, these are all about a thousand square feet. Next slide, please. It's the penthouse um layout, uh, at the top of the page, it's Merrimack Street, you know, that's the terrace. Um, you know, which and showed, you know, terrace is about six or seven feet deep. And uh lower left hand corner, right hand corner, those are those two sort of balconies which face the back. Um, the back parking lot, and in the middle, you can see how sort of the addition of that third stair. You know, really helps make these units uh kind of workable and larger. As opposed to sort of having a central floor and we're right down the middle, to make this floor inefficiently. Next slide, please. So a couple of um, you know, artist renderings, um, this is from the west with our, you know, back to basically the. Cow looking up to the parking garage. Green Street's on our left. Next slide, please. This is from the west, you know, essentially parking garage on our right, you know, the Green Street on, on the left. Next slide, please. Oh, and you know, Steve Sawyer already spoke about some of the peer review comments that have been addressed, some of the things that uh we had in our initial submission was. Infiltration system that has been reviewed since the latest site plan, you know, we've added drainage details, we've added details for the. Uh, guard rail um at the back of the site. Uh, the exterior lighting was provided in the original package, but uh it wasn't included on the. Engineering plans from Millennium, it was actually architectural plans, so I think uh the peer review would actually miss that. So that is now on uh Millennium's plans, and we've also uh, uh, have provided cut sheets for, for all the lines. And also, uh, Steve had spoken about like the addition of the uh sidewalk containing across the driveway. So those are all benefits. Next slide, please. And you know, finally, just to summarize, summary of the public benefits, and there are a lot here. Um, Nick has always talked about the inbuild of the gap tooth here, determining who likes to use, and um. This is sort of an unsightly lot, you know, and, and we're uh, you know, proposing something here that um. And like I said, it's entirely appropriate for this location, um, and I think is, uh, from a design standpoint, is hopefully going to sort of stand. Test of time and look like it's um always belonged here in Newburyport. We're also, very importantly, reactivating the sidewalk here. And uh, like I said, I think this is a section of Merrimack Street that doesn't get a lot of traffic, and. I think part of that is because it's somewhat, somewhat unsightly, so uh hopefully this project will, you know, fix that, and um. You know, lastly, just providing some different types of housing units here. Um, you know, with the exception of the penthouse units, which are about twelve hundred square feet, the, the rest of the units are about a thousand, thousand square feet. Which is a nice sort of very modest square footage. And finally, um, you know, hopefully this uh project is going to make downtown Newburyport even, even better. So, so. Of those, and we'll be happy to answer some questions.
Any initial questions or how?
Just um, a couple of questions, just concerning the uh, the lighting in the back of the building. Uh, you mentioned that there are two, two lights in the parking lot. Um, and are those, are those down facing lights, those four contained?
Yes, there'd be two down facing lights, you can see, there's one, uh, there's a small aisle there, and then. Five spaces uh to the left, there's one there, so they, they, they're both cut off down facing lights. Uh, I think there is a, I do have some uh, uh, photometrics of that, that I could add to the plan to show that.
And then as far as the lights underneath the uh, the parking that's under, underneath the building, those are just like ceiling lights coming down.
Yeah, they're just these reset ceiling lights.
And then, one other, one other question, you, you just expanded the area where the dumpster is located, does that. Enable a larger dumpster to be placed there?
It's like, it's, yeah, slightly larger, it's slightly larger, um. I, I think I just, what I did is I kind of rotated and shifted, so a truck could come in, straight in on it. Uh, and just take up one lane, so if there was any, any conflict, a car could swing by on the right coming in or left leaving. Uh, we can confirm what um, what size dumpsters, dumpsters will fit in that enclosure also.
There was some concern about it being adequate for the, the number of units?
Yeah, and I guess that, you know, a lot of it might dictate that maybe they'd have to come twice a week or something of that nature, but. I don't think we, we'd probably increase the frequency versus um, increase the size, just because of the restricted area in the rear.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah. There are certifications with the gas page? Yes, certainly the uh. Good evening, thank you for your time, my name is Rene Bernard, forty-five Merrimack Street. Um, regarding the closure of the site, it is completed by, um, was completed by a ransom environmental engineer, he made a. Hundred and fifty-eight page report, basically concluding the site is for neighbor development.
So it gets signed off by anyone from?
It's been signed off by the state, and we can certainly provide that report.
So there are no limitations on?
There's no activity, there's limitations on this thing.
Yeah, actually, I, I follow up with that, um, we did as part of the storm water analysis and such, we did it in sense of, so I think we did six, six test pits out there. And all of the test pits found clean material, no odor or anything, so it was all. No, no indication of any wounds or stuff.
Steve, while you're up there. Would you mind just explaining a little bit more detail as to how the storm water, maybe your systems work, or is it entirely?
Yeah, so actually, originally, um, originally I had, uh. Uh, we collected and directed it to an infiltration chamber system, and actually, both the city engineer and the peer review didn't feel it was necessary. They said it's not necessary, we just want clean water. Um, we don't think it's a great idea to be infiltrating in a gas station, even though it hasn't been cleaned up, which makes sense. Um, so. Yep, yeah, yeah. So you can see uh behind, right behind the building, you'll see there's two, everything grades to the, in the rear. Everything grades to those two uh catch basins, the deep sun catch basin to the hood. Uh, so that'd be the first level of treatment, uh, and then from there, it's routed to a manhole where it bends and then runs out, and. Right there at the entry is the, they call it a water quality unit, uh, so those provide the final cleaning, which. Actually gives us the full eighty percent TSS removal, floatables and solids. So it's clean water meets the, this was a, uh, we were before in a wetland project. This would be the full deep piece, stormwater standards, and starts walking, walking, and then also you can see there's a small basin on the right. So the, as, as you know, as, as shown, the, the slope slopes from left to right, so that driveway is super elevated, so there's got a line flow. That will flow into that catch basin, it's picked up prior to flowing across the sidewalk, so we, we basically pick up. We pick up the entire pavement and we collect it, treat it, before we convey it up to the city. I want to, one, one thing that I didn't mention on this is, you know, as far as the parking in the rear. That's actually from the, I guess, from the police station and such, that's pushed down, so the wall, there's, there's an existing wall. Along the access to the police station, uh, and the, to the rear of those five, actually, uh. Uh, any, it's like I said, yeah, keep going down, so that's just a little, that's just a short wall, but. Where the accessway to the police station is behind those, uh, yeah, right there, there's an existing concrete wall, it's about, I think, four or five feet high. Um, so the parking spaces are pushed down, you really can't, you really can't see the cars from above, because it kind of pushed in that hole bit up there, which is good. Kind of screens it from the surrounding area. We had to add a wall uh to the left of that, uh, we tie into the city wall. There's an old timber wall, I think we're taking out some timber wall there that we'll be putting in when it was, it'll be a, a. Shape lock wall, those concrete block walls that look like split granite, uh, so we'll run it down that edge, and then. We end up getting squeezed for a bit aside, squeezed a bit, and we're, we're going to do a pile and lagging wall there, just because we don't have the cross sectional width. Um, and similar, I, I worked in the Kelly School, and where that driveway with the access to the basement parking at the Kelly School. We did that same treatment on the right, just because we only had two feet to go, it's a steep wall, and it's got to be six feet high. Um, so that, I mean, that will eventually be designed by a, you know, the destruction engineer will have to design it, I can't design it, but. I've done enough of them, I know the cross sectional thickness of it and such. And then from that point, we have a little, we have an extension of, uh, we turned back to the split, the split block there, the shape lock. That we dive into the uh, uh, tie back in, uh, to, to grade there. So the entire area is really, it, it, not only is it screened from the. So the entire area is really, it, it not only is it screened from the from Merrimack Street, it's kind of screened from the rear, granted it's just, it's a police access here, I believe that's um city park, I believe it's uh, city hall parking and such in the gravel lot where the old, the old, was it the old Body World building was, I think that's years ago. Uh, so that's one thing I forgot to mention during the presentation, that the parking is uh, screened from all sides.
One, one other, one other question, there's, there is no utilities or mechanical equipment on the roof?
Well, actually, what we're hoping to do is put that on them on the walls. Back wall parking. So we're hoping to avoid putting any kind of utility. So I hear you can just clarify, I started to mean back here. Yeah, go to the next slide. You know, so very similar to what we did on on Market Street, so uh, there will be these units that are mounted on the wall um, that those cars are facing. That's actually under the residential units above, so we're hoping to put all of the mechanical equipment there and keep it off. That's
Um, I have a question about the landscaping plan. I may have missed it somewhere else, but the plan shows two, there appears to be uh, ballards with lights in the sidewalk. Uh, down facing lights. Uh, that, the top of the pantry. And I'm not sure whether all of them, um, and I didn't notice them on the civil wondering about those. It'd be in the city right away, so the city would be responsible for them?
That's a great question, Rick. Uh, there are two ballers that were originally put equal distance up front entryway, leave the other two dark circles are the period lights. Uh, the city standard issue period lights. So, you know, we're, we're open to suggestions on whether the ballers work there. So define the entrance with the, the canopy over, over top of that. They obviously would be in the right of way, we would be permission to put them there. Um, if, if they do affect that lighting, they don't have to, but if they have lighting, it would be a maintenance responsibility of that, so.
I don't, I don't have a strong feeling, just want to make sure civil plans align with the landscaping plans.
And to that point, there, there's no question, we need to clean up the landscape plan, the site plan and the architectural plans to make sure we can we've obviously been making changes as a result of the peer review that haven't paid it through. So, we'll do it.
And just one other point about that. I don't know if this is the case or not, but if you have two ballers there, it might suggest that's a place to park the street. You don't want to suggest that. It doesn't have a process, but you know, I don't know, you often have that.
I don't know if the lighting is essential in the ball, I think the ballers make some sense there. It's all in steel ballers. That level of protection, but again, we're not seeing very close to the canopy too. They'd be, they're not that tall. There'd be no conflict, but they'd be up near the edges of it. If anybody feels strongly about that one way or the other, we can keep working on it and present something with a detail on the baller and decide the next being, what do you want?
That's just the question about, will the city accept responsibility? There's another one of those questions, yes, I'm going to the city council.
Yeah, by the way, I have members on the happy to help coordinate on big management sector, I could have these things. Don't have a fresh start bracket for it, I apologize being there, but obviously, good conditions, but they that's such that if the city, you know, there's a lot of people that accept that in the right way. Uh, and I suppose that's not a problem with that, then they should move the plans.
Okay, there's one question. Um, getting back to the, the dumpster in the back. Is that, does this revised plan address the concerns that were raised by you about
Um, I mean, my, I, I was the first person there capacity, my only concern was just based on discussions I had about from this city's energy, most cycling for air. Um, that she knows all the cities waste, but um, just that, that the size seems small based on experience and discussion with her, so um, I'm, you know, I'm satisfied, um, that perhaps you want to put a condition to project, like just to clarify that, you know, the applicants are required to do this frequent maintenance is a necessary, you know, accumulation trash. Uh, but it, it did seem like something, I think it was Steve that mentioned earlier, that clearly they might have to have more frequent maintenance than that. I find a typical project the size that I expect longer, but it's fine if it is like that.
First, your question about the second bucket or the second?
Yeah, I got, that is another question, I guess, more about the, the configuration, which, you know, could be resolved. And it's spoken about the intended size of dumpsters and how that'd be configured in there, that might be somebody had to clarify in the next meeting or Yeah. Uh, and Molly's home, what do you want to talk to her in the office, in the direction, or is that is it, we can talk with her? Um, because she obviously can chime in, obviously, I think there's an understanding here at this paper. Uh, we'll pick up, but I'm just excited.
Any other question or comment? Uh, just, just one last comment on the ball. I don't have any particular objection to the ball, and so I'm trying to think of a precedent for that this ball is, if it if, if it's not necessary. It, it might seem a little out of character. Uh, there's no other questions, I'll, I'll open up if you want to comment. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, my name is Carrie Patty, and my husband Jack and I, um own the building at sixty six Pleasant Street, right behind this proposed building. Um, my parents, Carol and Jerry Rourke, also have retired there. It is um, right next to City Hall and we have two residential units and then we have a small unit in the front. Um, we, we have lived here for many years and you know, somewhat but Brown Square is a very quiet potential neighborhood. After five o'clock, I mean, it's just so peaceful. Over the years, we have, um, we have endured a few shortcomings in that, um half of our land out back was taken by, in the domain by the city to the um entrance in the back and egress to the police station. Um, and, you know, we lost a good amount of our land there, we also lost our whole river view when Porton's yard was we do understand that this is what happens in the city. But the proposed um, project that's right behind us, and before I got my letter just recently, I had no idea. Um, it's white, here, so we're all in the same neighborhood, but I had no idea this would be being proposed. And some of our concerns are, we are in the back. Um, not only will we be looking into probably the second building, blocking all of the natural light that comes to the back. We, we have two decks that are out the back, uh, which are our area for getting outside and a patio. We do have a fence, but currently when we look to the right, we're looking right into um, the second or third floor of City Hall. This building is, looks from the elevation like it's going to be about as high as City Hall, so we will be completely penned in. Um, not only are we going to have our natural light locked, but we're going to be looking into now that I see the, the back of the building with all of these residential units, so I would imagine each one of these little residential units, their balcony are going to have a light. And the overall lights from the building and then the parking area, which I didn't expect just the cars coming in at any hour of the day, the exhaust, the um just the looking into the dumpster, the sounds and noises and the smell of the dumpster and coming several times a week to pick up and drop off, um, and it's just really going to change our quality of life immensely. Um, there's also the other half of our building has two residential units, which are unfortunately empty at the moment, so no one can really come and um, speak to you. There's also a residential building to the left of that, that is a very nice duplex building. That would be um, affected by this. And in all of the presentation, I did see a lot of consideration given to the front and the side and the Merrimack Street um, view, but really not much given to the Brown Square and that will back Um, forest worries is a very large and um, we will just be, our building's been there since eighteen fifty, eighteen seventy. So, um, it's a new structure and um, the building next to it has been there for many, many years as well. A historical district, so it's just very disappointing to think that we'll be sitting out on the deck, my parents will be sitting out on their deck and looking into a parking lot dumpsters in the back of a, you know, into the second floor of the building. With, um, and I really don't understand what those Juliet balconies are going to afford anybody because they're going to be looking out. A certain lot exhaust and will be waiting to each other, but um, it's a very close proximity, so I hope we missed and I didn't get up here and say something, um, I just think it's a very large project. Thank you very much.
Any other comment? We'll close and public comment then. Back to the board for I guess we could get into design comments. Will we open the public?
Yes, we live in Carol, and we're proud of the building with my daughter and sixty six sorry, I'm going to go on the apartment tonight. We're the ones that sit out on the deck and I came down here tonight thinking, well, this is progress. They can't, we wanted a neighborhood that we love. I came from the city, Burke Line Avenue, so I know what tall buildings look like. But all the attention is on the front of the building. The back and how the store from the books, the back of the building, yes, more bottom, but it's ugly. That's where they're going to put the lights and the dumpster and the cars. And people, like my daughter said, will be sitting on our deck, looking at people sitting on their decks, that's a little too close. And then the roof, they're going to have lights on that roof, I'm sure. Because if people are going to utilize and go outside, they need lighting and the lighting is going to be that's all I wanted to say. Newbury Court's a beautiful city and they've done a good job on it. So I came down here tonight and I wasn't going to say a word, I saw that. Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Colin Corso and I'm the owner street and to the next street wall. Um, I think we're the largest this project generally goes, you know, once seen in the project. I sent a letter to the board, allowing us to primarily decide my activities, in which I know that we really have a chance to, you know, respond to at this point, um, but I just thought I should speak just to ensure that the board received the letter. To, not only for my property, but also, you know, city hall, police station. You know, in the letter, I, I, you know, I remember what at the ground floor, it might actually be below the next street. The entire occupants is to retain it all. So, you know, I'm not a geotek there's probably some level due to that fact, you know, we lower. So I just wanted to make sure the board received the letter. We are we are, sorry. We are looking at that street line, okay.
Any other comments?
May I just um may I just add that if all those utilities sorry, may I just add that if all those utilities um, are put on the back of the building, as was discussed. Air conditioning units, all of that, that is also going to be a twenty four seven you know, loud humming noise towards the residential units that are behind it. Um, I didn't even think about protections for construction, I mean, these are all the behind it, so that's, I mean, that just for my ears out too, because we do have residents that will be living there. So be it for the noise in construction, but just to make sure that nothing happens to those older buildings behind us, I'm sure you're worried about City Hall. I guess that's, I guess that's the last I wanted to make, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close public comment. Right, with any other practice, we have, we have some design comment. Think we could go as part of the public record. If some of this has been asked along the way, right, point, you know maybe an opportunity to respond to some of it tonight, I think we'll get this. We asked a question about soils, so we don't need to ask that again. Just in, in terms of building type. You were asking for approval of the special department related to visual height of the building. And, and I think given some of the public comment and given some of the signs that we had talked about before. I think you've got to provide more documentation relative to the scale of the building. So I, I appreciate the street wall elevation that you presented tonight. I would ask that you extend that at least down to include the city park and garage. Uh, so, so we can see that in the entire stretch of, of street wall, but I think, given, given comments from the other uh, I think it's also important to see the scale of the building from the Pleasant Street. And I, I think I would suggest that you do that in a couple of different ways. One, one is to develop a cross section through the site across Merrimack Street showing the building downhill site running towards the river. Of the site running up toward Pleasant Street, so we can see the scale of all of those buildings and what the impact is of, of the proposed structure on, on it around the views surrounding. Uh, but I think you, if it's possible, you could also show uh, viewpoints from up there. And I ask that for two reasons, one, one is views for residents who are living the other is the view of the root state. Uh, and to understand the suggestion relative to mechanics. I think it's important to see what state of this proposed structure looks like. So, can put together the link to that. On the subject of, of retail. I understand this is a sloping site. But we did show an elevation tonight, showed as a dot. The elevation of the ground or flat. And it looked to me like, at least for the first couple of storefront bays. There's, there's only a few inches of, of difference in elevation between the sidewalk and the ground. I think. I think you've got to think very seriously about providing direct access to retail. I think it's important for the retail or commercial spaces there. I think that. I'm not sure how deliveries happen to. Could you just point out on that elevation, where are you referencing? Mine is the elevation. At least those first two windows, either side of the. Yeah. Probably a point. So I, I, I don't think it's out of the question. But I think it's very important. Just operationally, if you don't have those. In terms of service and deliveries to those two commercial spaces. Suggesting is that everything comes through that central lobby entry. And that's not a very big lot. I don't know where the mailboxes are, I don't know where the different rooms and under. I don't know where any of that exists in a small lobby that has double doors or wall. In that space, you're suggesting that all deliveries. So that's a question operationally. I'm not sure where the trucks are standing while deliveries are happening here, so I think, I think you need to think about that. And it's about the retail space offering. So, so that, that for me is a, a very big. We talked about the canopy and acknowledged the city council improvement for that. I would at least think about that canopy has to come. I'm thinking about fire trucks, I'm thinking about other trucks pulling. And I think coming right up to the curb line, maybe pushing in a little bit to the arms. Parking, we've talked about, I'm very happy that you acknowledged the concrete bases on the columns in the parking lot. That would be a good development. Frank, pick up, we have talked about, I, I would only ask if you have really looked at what the truck and maneuver in, in the entry driveway with enough space that cars can pass. And not block that driveway and what, what the operational plan is like that. Roof scape, we've talked about. I think it's an interesting content. But you need to provide a lot more information. I think the abutment said very legitimate. We need to see specifically what that mechanic of a roof is, what the noise levels are. Proposing to locate them because all of this is visible in one way or another from. And it's, it's a significant concern, I think, for the surrounding property. Just a design comment. You showed a lot of precedent images from around different. And I didn't see in any of those images, and again, I'm trying to think of precedent because I can't think of an example. A reentry. A building that is size, reentry as in the last, last day that sets. And I think that's that's a little unusual, but what makes it particularly unusual is the many balconies that are home in that space at the second and third floor. Those are potentially very prominent feature. Very visible, the street, some furniture, the things around it. And I would just put on the table that I think this building might be a little quieter in terms of visibility of elements like if, if you allow those corners. Falling, and you can still have the balconies there, but maybe those balconies have openings that are the scale of the window. And you have a mason repair in the corner, it all could feel very dangerous in terms of the width. But you don't have the visibility issues that you have the open balcony. And you don't have the unusual feature of metal balconies at a corner. You can see around. So I think if you brought a parapet wall up to the height of itself, if that didn't get you to. You could, you could add a metal rail to that. But, but I think all of that gets you a quieter building elevation. And perhaps conceals from view some of the things that might. But yeah, that's, that's something that I would want to see you at least take a look. We talked about lighting details a little bit, plus I'm missing it in documentation. There's a lot of cut sheets that are there, but so I know generally what the intention is with lighting, but it would be good to understand color. So the, the cut sheets provide options, but, but what I was looking at didn't, didn't specify exactly what the selection is. So color and finish, what the color temperature is of the lighting that is suggested, what the light levels are. All of the fixtures you presented present options for all of that, but you haven't identified which one you would actually discuss. So I think most of the information is there, you just have. Lastly, and Tom Osato mentioned this. There are concerns about construction related to abutment. And I think this, this is a broader discussion, probably a discussion that will extend into a building permit requirement. But there needs to be a construction management plan that looks at existing condition survey for surrounding buildings, looks at, at periodic and frequent monitoring. Looks at construction methodologies related to foundations, also without driven piles or piles, you know, all of those things to reduce vibration and impact. Effects on the surroundings, so that's another discussion. Not necessarily design, but in terms of construction that I think is very important that we need to continue as well. So I'm, I'm gonna take a rest.
That list that you just went through was the chairman's stack, the list that we discussed, was that generated from the discussion we had prior to this hearing, the last meeting, point one. It sounded very. Appreciate it. The only, the only comment I will make is one of the discussions we had when we talked about the rear of the building was on that list, the sightlines, the impact, the scale. So we hear, we hear you, we had that, that was probably one of the lengthier discussions beyond lighting and some of that.
I have one, one comment to add, without prescribing how I would deal with this comment. To incorporate a lot of the things that you just heard, I think there may be an opportunity that on the view from the east rendering, which you can put up on the screen. We, we focused a lot, I think, prior to this hearing on the view from the west. This view from the east, I think, is gonna be the way a lot of pedestrians experience this building, and I'm really excited to say some nice things about the project. I think that the, the general design is striking a nice balance between historical features and not like being a a total copy of any building that we know. So I think the Merrimack Street side is, is, is pretty successful, but I think an opportunity here, it might give you some ideas how to incorporate some of these other comments, is that it's such a straightforward design, it doesn't have to be so, so perfectly symmetrical. I think this downhill side has a real opportunity to become more pedestrian oriented on this corner and start to draw people up towards, you know, uphill, because you're gonna be asking pedestrians to use those spaces, those retail spaces to kind of start walking up a hill into a part of the city that people haven't walked as much, so I think there might be an opportunity with a little asymmetry, asymmetry to the design, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to seeing something a little more unique on this corner in particular to create kind of a connection to downtown. But without describing what I would have in mind for that, I just think there's an opportunity there to maybe explore something a little different and, and address some of the chair's comments as well. Oh, and particularly, you know, different levels and different entry solutions as well.
Just kind of going on that. Thinking about pedestrian, most people aren't gonna see the front view. You're gonna see it coming from the parking garage or coming through the street. So I think that symmetry is not as important as getting access to the spaces.
The only thing on the list I might, might have slept from that one was the signage. We talked a little bit about the, the, you know, the, the plan. You know, because of retail, with, with a little more detail of how oftentimes you wait until you get retail, then we discuss signage, but just the framework of.
Sure, like when Nick and I spoke about this, we talked generally about sort of a sign package in the sense that it could be consistent signage, the placement of the sign in the building and so forth, recognizing that there are issues for downtown, if this name is my project, that the board could go call for approval.
I just would add one thing. Mr. Bennington brought it up, I, I, I do wanna compliment the development on, or a proposal that that's such a positive impact. Then, then a site that or something like this, or I think this is approaching a very good solution. I think there's a lot of things to work out. But I do want to say that, that I appreciate the development teams and, and they're on. So with that, I, I think we're headed in the direction of continuing. So unless there are any other. Like we asked. If you have a suggestion relative.
The next meetings in May would be the seventh. So note that on May seventh, there's a zoning hearing, we might actually have another, a two zoning hearings together tonight, so just the board that we're here. Typically, the board would expect materials really, really late before the meeting, so it can look at in the preparations, I'm just thinking about that.
I don't even want to.
Forty-one.
Thank you, I'm. I'll, I'll move to continue the site plan review application, the DOD special permit, for mixed use, special room for ITIS, special permit, public hearing for four forty-nine, fifty-seven Merrimack Street to meeting at five twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five.
Last public hearing every night is one center street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and there's the board with that long time, I can use your, I think, maybe, but pretty sad. No planning for it. My name is Lisa Bean for the record, me telling a positive, the Green Street in the report. Joseph Moison for the property of one Center Street, with me tonight is the family graph, who's the architect on the project. Joseph Moison, who, by the way, the property has been in the Moison family since the early nineteen fifties and he's just purchased it from his aunt, so he's continuing to to stay in his family. He proposes to renovate and add a small addition on the existing, you go to the next ending. On the existing structure and change it from a non-conforming single family, which all of you know is not committed in the B two zoning district. To a conforming mixed use structure with professional services on the first floor and an apartment, a residential unit on the second. The property is located in the B two zoning district, downtown Orla district. And it's currently, as I said, a single family home, you go to the next. The proposal is on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Which has two thousand four hundred twenty-six square feet of area. That's a square feet required. The only non-conformity other than lot size is the second back line Center Street, which would be the front yard because it's the longest frontage. And that's actually one foot one over the property line, if we're actually inside the property line, it would be conforming because there are no, so. It's non-conforming because it's over the property line and that's the bay windows that are on Center Street. All other dimensional requirements are met. The proposal includes fifteen percent demolition of the exterior walls and renovation of the interior, as I said. And changes to the, to the exterior as well. So we actually require on this little project, a DOD special permit, a special permit for the mixed use. A special permit for non-conformities because we are modifying a pre-existing non-conforming structure for a different use. Even though we're not really changing any of the non-conformities and a special permit for the ITI. So the history of the project is, we go to the next slide, the structure was constructed around in, in eighteen seventy-five, according to the district data sheets. Where it's listed as contributory, or eighteen fifty, according to the assessors records, which is all of you know, is kind of the fallback for the assessor. So we rely on the district data sheets. It was listed on the data sheets as thirty-four Water Street, so you wouldn't find it as a Center Street address on the data sheets, it's actually thirty-four Water Street. There is no form B for the structure. And it appears on the nineteen oh six, nineteen fourteen sandpaper maps and the nineteen twenty-four assessors map. So if you can go to the next slide, ending. So here's the current mine maps, all of you are probably familiar with this, this is the corner of Center and Water Street. And you can see the parking lot for the Mexican restaurant next door. Across the street is the point, of course. And so here's the property in the yellow outline, next slide please. So this is the nineteen oh six assessors map at the time, not surprisingly, there was more than one structure on the spot. Obviously, the structure on Water Street is gone, but you do see the, the second structure, which is the structure in question, next slide. And this is the nineteen fourteen assessors map, again, we still have the structure. But then you can see the bay windows kind of appear in this one, but they, they, so that's the structure. And then the next slide is the nineteen twenty-four assessors map. I have to tell you, I'm not really sure when that original structure came down, but as you can see now. The Moison name is still on this land. But the structure we're talking about is listed as one here. So that's the structure in question, and the next slide. Um, so that's the structure in question. And the next slide. So, um, as we said, uh, we're proposing to improve, um, exterior condition of the property. Uh, replace the vinyl replacement windows, windows, restore the trim and the rakes and the corner boards, repoint the brick foundation, replace the cedar, cedar shingles and pine. Uh, we're going to add the addition, which we believe is subservient to the main structure. And I'll talk to you about the historic commission comment shortly. And then a small amount of demolition on the exterior, uh, with the, um, primary gable form being preserved. Um, we have been before the historic commission, as you know, you received the report from the historic commission. Um, their comments included that current proposed changes to the structure have been carefully considered to ensure the preservation of its historic character. They also said the size and styling of the proposed addition do not take away from the style amassing in the original structure. So, um, we think those are all really important comments. Next slide please. So just so you get an idea of what the existing conditions look like, uh, this is the property insured. We've all walked by it a million times. Um, so this was taken in the winter. Thank goodness. At least right now we don't have snow. Although we're doing have snow tonight. Um, that was, that's the front, um, elevation on Center Street. Next slide please. And this is the south elevation. So this is the left-hand side as you're facing it on, um, Water Street. Next slide please. And then that's the north elevation, um, from Water Street. And the next slide please. So here's the site plan, just so you can get an idea of, um, what we're working with. Um, we, we're not changing anything with regards to the footprint. We do add some, um, exterior stairs on the rear, um, so we can get out of the story. And then Eileen is going to talk about the second, uh, story we're going to put on that front bump out. Um, but the other, otherwise the building on the site isn't going to change. But we'll talk about the parking and whatnot, um, in a little bit, but just to align that, there will be two parking spaces on site. Um, Andy's pointing to them now, um, and those resolve the residential requirements. Then we're required to have two parking spaces related to the commercial use and we're, um, requesting an ITI special permit, uh, for those parking spaces. Um, towards the end, we'll talk a little bit about sidewalks and the purpose. Um, but for now, what I want to do is turn it over to Eileen to review the architectural plans.
Evening, Amy Graff, Graff Architects. So, um, as Lisa mentioned, this is a very simple building. And what we have in front of us is one of these, that area is historically known, all these modest homes that supplying houses for, uh, people who work at the shipyards. So this is in the evening of that. This house is about eighteen B by twenty-eight B. It's a little garage bigger than that, but, um, so it's about thousands square feet, uh, of living space. And so what we're proposing is a second story put on the, on the left side, single story addition, um, which you recall from the, from the map shown that actually was later addition, um, to the structure. Um, and it can be seen as well at the foundation level. The original house has a brick foundation. This one has a big block. Um, but we're proposing a second story addition. You can see it at the bottom left. Um, there's a change there from the Center Street side, but then also you can see the shallow, uh, roof pitch on the second story there again. So staying subservient to the, to the main form. On that same bottom right, you can also see the proposed dormer that's directly behind it. So we're placing that on the eastern side, um, the least visible of all the elevations. Um, and that will help those two additions will help, uh, living space dramatically, again, going from thousands of feet to thirteen hundreds of feet. So regions worth of addition, but very valuable in its, in its, uh, in its use. Um, so some things to talk about are the changes in materials. Really the building is support is really being maintained essentially from the center side. It's very pure. The original, what we want to do is update siding, um, roofing in kind. It's from a retired looking shingles. We'll replace that with Maybach cedar shingle, um, windows. Vinyl windows, one of our modern replacements. We're going to bring that back to the two over two. Double laced window. Um, the roofing will also get upgraded to the architectural shingles. Um, at the lower level of the brick, we'd like to repoint that where needed, trim and, and, and such. Eve details will also get repaired in kind in the new product. Um, there is a chimney there, um, that currently is, uh, not of use, um, functionally, and that will be, uh, rebuilt, um, in a Polish and English story. Um, and as you can see, sorry, in the bottom left, also see the proposed stair that we are, um, adding on the back to give to provide a rest from the second level of living space. Um, then Andy, if we go to the next slide, we can see wrapped around the building here on the bottom left, you can see that shed former third floor level. And then also on the right, see, excuse me, the, um, the side of that same dormer as well as the stairs. Um, I think that, um, one thing to point out actually is, you want me to hit?
Sure.
We can go to the site plan, Andy, and just talk about some of the changes outside. If we start on the bottom, on the far left corner, um, on the Water Street, Center Street corner, there's an existing chain link fence that is supposed to be removed. Um, so that should improve the feel, quality of that property. Um, as we travel down Center Street, fountain corner, you can see that notation as this, uh, concrete sign. That hits, uh, parking spot. We're going to transition there into the brick sidewalk.
Oh, no, I'm going to start off this.
Yeah. And then, um, as we're traveling, I'll stay on, on fencing. If we travel to the right side of the property, um, there is a, I'm sorry, yes, that exactly, thank you. There's a sort of blockaded fence that also will be replaced as part of this. Um, so those, those are the improvements you can see in terms of that. Um, but, but again, overall, a very modest home that we're just trying to, to, to obtain and, and, um, in, in improve the living space, um, for the owner. And, um, I think in the process of preserving the wellness, which is even the changes mostly on primarily.
Well, so I'm giving my, um, everybody's suspension, we'll talk about the sidewalks now before I go through the great stuff.
Just a clarification, well, this is, we had had some discussion about this earlier today. I think she and I are on the same page about some of the details here. What you're seeing is a mark of a hand copy. Um, that can be uploaded before the tomorrow and you're, what you're seeing on the screen is in the presentation before the.
So as you all know, there's a, the tree and sidewalk, the famous tree and sidewalk ordinance in the city. Um, so in relationship to that, the DPW went down thirty days or so ago. Um, because as you can see, there's a lot of sidewalk here, right? For a small project, that's a big chunk of change, um, to do it. And, you know, if the tree and sidewalk ordinance is triggered, which means that the value of the construction, Joe's doing this construction himself. So if the value of the construction is more than fifty percent of the value of the structure, then we have to replace all of the sidewalks, which would include the corner, right? You get the tip down and everything. So that's, that's pretty expensive. Um, but it's in pretty tough shape. Um, and so the DPW sometimes tries to work with you, um, because of the cost of something like this. But in this instance, they were concerned about that. So I have two conditions here. Um, one is if the tree and sidewalk ordinance is triggered and one is if the tree and sidewalk ordinance is not triggered. And then I've attached, um, very nicely done hand drawn sketch plans to explain what the words mean, but I can show you one. Um, on the plan itself that Andy has up here. So if the tree and sidewalk is triggered, right? Joe will have to replace all of the sidewalks along the perimeter of the property to the brick sidewalk on Water Street. So we would not be replacing the brick sidewalk as it exists as a brick, but everything from the edge of that all the way up through Center Street to the edge of the property, that sidewalk would have to be replaced. In doing that, then also in order to accommodate the needed edge of the curb cut, um, for this, for the first parking space, that curb cut would be slid over to the edge of the parking space. But then in order to close up what currently has no curbing on the property, that curbing would be extended down to the edge of the second parking space, right? So we would formalize the sidewalk as part of that construction. And then because the sidewalk actually goes into the property by ten to twelve inches, depending where you are, right there where Andy's pointing. Um, Joe has agreed to, uh, give an easement to the city to preserve that existing sidewalk area. Right? So we wouldn't make the sidewalk any bigger, but when it's replaced, it would be there. And then we would do that easement similar to what we did at the corner of State High, um, to accommodate the sidewalk there that actually runs into the property. So that's if the tree and sidewalk ordinance is triggered. If the tree and sidewalk ordinance is not triggered, then, um, the proposal that we talked to the historic commission about and which is marked on this plan, um, everything I've said about the parking space and the curbing and center would take place in the easement, but the sidewalk itself would be replaced where the batuminus currently is. So starting at the edge of that concrete line there, up Center Street through the batuminus, that would all be replaced with brick. Now, I was down there tonight. The chair's been down there. The concrete sidewalk to the left is in tough condition, right? So we would work with the DPW to tie that all together. And the goal would be to have DPW do that at the same time that we were doing the rest, given the cost. So those are the two conditions that we believe will address the issues, um, with both the curbing, the sidewalk, uh, sidewalk easement into the property. And, um, after I go through all of this, we're going to request that those two conditions and these very talentably drawn plans become a part of the decision. So everybody's clear about. So Andy, if you could, um, move forward past the, um, yeah, past the architectural limits. Um, so we have to comply with a number of, of criteria in the ordinance for our various special permits. Uh, the first special permit would be the DOD special permit. I mean, as you know, we have to show that the alterations have to be compatible with the historic building and structures within the DOD. Um, and, um, and also with compatible with the size, scale, height, color, material, character of both the historic building and, and the, um, area which it's located. Um, next slide please. So in relation to the historic portion of the structure, um, we've shown that the enlargement does not change any of the setbacks and only extends it upwards. The proposal complements the existing volume amassing by placing the addition on the north elevation yet remains subservient to the existing eve and main portion of the structure. Um, next in relation to the immediate area, the structure is much smaller than many of the buildings in the immediate area. Regarding the materials and character, the proposal utilizes appropriate materials and designs, as Eileen has reviewed with you. Um, is preserving and rehabilitating the structure with a modest increase of three hundred and one square foot of area. Uh, and the addition, as I said, is small and subservient to the original structure. Um, I point out again, go to the next slide please, that we did receive a favorable report from the historic commission, including their comments, uh, related to the proposed changes of the structure have been carefully considered to ensure the preservation of its historic character. They also said that the size and styling of the proposed addition do not take away from the style amassing of the original structure and that the proposed alterations to the exterior of the structure is described um, to the NHC and the official filing have been thoroughly evaluated and would not adversely impact the historic values of the property or immediate surroundings. So, um, we believe that, um, we meet the DOD special permit criteria, but then also as part of the DOD special permit criteria, we have to meet all of the general special permit criteria in ten H seven, but we also, lucky for you, have to meet those same criteria for the mixed use special permit. So I'm going to review them together at one time. Um, so under ten H seven, uh, the first criteria is that the use requested is listed in the table of use regulations. Here mixed use is allowed in the B two district via special permit. Importantly, we are changing from a use that is not allowed in the B two to use that is allowed by special permit. The next criteria is that requested use is essential or desirable for public convenience and welfare. Here by allowing the mixed use by special permit in the B two district, the city has determined it's essential or desirable to the well-versed city. The proposal brings the property into performance with the ordinance by removing the pre-existing non-conforming, um, use and allowing a use by special permit. Um, the next is that the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Here, of course, there is plenty of sidewalks in the area. That's not going to be an issue. Plus, we're going to repair the sidewalks. Uh, and next, uh, there won't be any undue traffic congestion. In fact, we're going to accommodate properly two parking spaces um, on the site. And then of course, our request to have the ITI. Uh, the next is the requested use will not overload the public water drainage sewer system or other municipal system. Here, the proposal adds a use of the first floor, which is the small commercial use, which will not, um, have any major impact on those. It's already used as a residence. So the use of the residential above is consistent with what's currently there. So there won't be any undue, um, undue, uh, impact on the public facilities. Uh, the next is, are there any special regulations for the use set forth in this special permit table? And there are none. Uh, the next is the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. Here, the proposed mixed use does not impair the integrity or character of the district. In fact, there are many of these substructures purposely located in the downtown, um, for all reasons that make our downtown uh, vibrant and, um, the envy of many communities in Massachusetts. Uh, the next is the requested use will not by its addition to the neighborhood cause an excess of that particular use. And here again, it won't cause an excess of that particular use. Uh, the next use, uh, mixed use area, uh, which goes to the next item that it's in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. So it's consistent with the district. So we have mixed use next door, um, to the east. And then up at the corner of, um, Center and, um, Middle Street, there are two mixed use buildings, Middle Street Foods. And then of course, the former law office that is both now commercial and residential. Of course, on Liberty Street, at the corner of Liberty and, um, uh, State Street, there's a mixed use building and they're scattered all throughout the area. So it's in harmony, uh, with the zoning for sure. And then finally, that the proposed use will not be conducted in manner so as to emit any dangerous, nauseous or injurious or otherwise objective activities. And of course, it won't as typical standard use for the downtown. Um, so with that, for those two particular things, we think that we meet the requirements of the DOD special permit as well as the special permit, um, for mixed, for mixed use. Uh, the next is the request of special permit for non-conformities. Um, here, under section nine B, um, there are two criteria for a commercial structure. Uh, one is that there will be no intensification or extension of an existing non-conformity for the addition of a new non-equal. And in this instance, as I said before, um, the proposal or excuse me, the existing structure is non-conforming for those two bump outs that go over, um, Center Street and then the lot area. And so we're not creating any other new non-conformities. So we need that criteria. And the next is that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. And again, it won't be because we're not making any changes to the existing non-conformities. And we believe that in fact, by improving the structure and the area generally, it will be much better for, uh, the neighborhood and the downtown generally. And finally, uh, the requested special permit for parking under the ITIF. Uh, we are providing the residential parking on site. Uh, and then, um, we are requesting to pay for two parking spaces into the ITIF on given the location um, in, uh, that meets the requirements of the ordinance for proximity. Um, so with that, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
So we are not, through these special permits, we are not affecting in any way the day, the base. We're not permitting it because of the system.
I'm sorry, Rick, I didn't hear.
The base, in front of the, two bases.
Oh, no, we're not touching the base.
Because the planning board is not doing anything about it.
No.
Just recognizing it.
That's right.
There was a, I may have missed this in this presentation. On the architectural stairs, a vertical lift. Can you talk about that? Couldn't figure out exactly how that fit into the whole entry.
We'd be changing use and now having the commercial space on the floor. Providing the vertical lift on that corner to allow access to that.
Could you describe, I couldn't actually see how it worked. Watch for the two directions.
So it would be easier, maybe the other direction? Or, yes. So, so as it works, what, how that's going to lift is to enter is actually would be from where that arrow is. And coming onto the lift and that will, it will raise to get to the platform where the top is.
Then there will be a gate on that. I couldn't visualize. The, I'm curious about the function. Is that something, is something we have to do? And it seems, it seems silly to build something that's nonfunctional.
So we've done it a number of places because the Historic Commission likes the chimneys to stay and they like the change in the roof line. I mean, I don't, we don't have to do it.
I just wonder why we do it too.
You do it because the Historic Commission really likes chimneys. But they also, I will say to their defense, they also understand if they're not functional, that there's a reason not to have the interior work.
My last question is about the sidewalk. So I went up here and I measured it and looked at the conditions and everything. Right now, there's a clear passage between the curb and the no parking sign, thirty-eight inches. But it looks like about sixteen inches of that is kind of where it has to be. So, and that no parking sign, I believe is on the, I think it's off.
Just up the street.
Yeah, it's, it's, well, it's right, it's actually right.
I see it.
So I think that is actually near property. And so, guess what I was thinking, you talked about providing an easement for continuing the sidewalk. And I appreciate that. I guess what I would like to have when we do, when we have a final condition, I assume we're going to wait for an engineer plan to rule it out.
Well, it depends on what. Lisa and I had talked about it in the reference.
So will Mary know whether the ordinance applies or not?
No, 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 but what I, but, well, I think to your point, what I would do is we're not going to know to the ordinance by the building premise. So, right, that's what triggers it, that's why I propose both conditions. And so if you want an engineer plan as opposed to my really nice handwriting, what we can say is before we commence the construction on the sidewalk, which of course all has to be done before the occupancy permit, that we submit an engineer plan, I don't have a problem.
And I guess, I guess what I was going to say is, in addition to your wonderfully drawn plans and exquisitely written, there.
Thanks, Mark.
I would, I would like to actually specify a sidewalk. A clear sidewalk of at least thirty-six inches, I'm not sure, but, you know, the, the brick sidewalk. Not, because right now, you could argue that the sidewalk is twenty inches wide. And I really don't mind.
No, 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 I don't think that it, I don't even think that it's twenty inches wide. I think it's thirty-six inches wide.
But it's hard to tell because.
No, 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 but we can say a minimum, because it has to be, we have to meet those requirements because it's probably a sidewalk. Joe doesn't have, he doesn't have an, we say a minimum of thirty-six inches, I don't have an issue.
That's great. And so that's why I wanted to make sure.
Just, just one question, I just wanted to clarify as far as the entrance to the residential unit. Is that, is that on the back?
No, actually.
Or is that part of the?
In that front elevation, where I was pointing to, so actually that bottom left. So that's the one that we're seeing underneath the canopy there on the left edition there. That's the door to the residence. It has a second entry on the back, on the stair, on the stair. We go to the second drawing, A02, the thing there. So at the top of the stair, that's the second entry via this left drawing. The top of the stair, and that's the second entry.
And so, and so on that front end, there's the two doors.
There's the two doors, correct. And the bottom, the bottom door under that one would be the second door.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm concerned about the driveway, but I think it's solvable. But I think, just want to point out that I think, well, I guess three things. One, there's no back line, I think that's, we'll just oversight, there would definitely be a back line to concrete. But the eighteen feet, I think also would probably need to be measured from the back of the sidewalk. It's probably a matter of inches.
Yes.
We can, we can clarify in the decision if you'd like.
I can do, I mean, you can certainly do that, but I can ask, I'll just ask Everett to do that when he does the plan.
Yeah, those are pretty minor. The third comment that was a little more major, which is that having the nine feet right to the building will make it very difficult for that stairway to function. And then I, I was already thinking that, but then I saw the elevation where there's actually, and because it's commercial use, not residential, you have to do the turned down handrail, which takes out another, like, I forget how many inches that is. Twelve inches? So that's like really foot into that driveway. So do you have enough wiggle room to move driveways?
A little bit down.
Down, yeah. Just, I think it's just a little too tight.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think, dude, I couldn't, I don't think, but up there with, with Director Gaffey, I was just thinking, the decision is in a very popular test, we've conditioned there, it's a whole jungle conditions law there. But that section anyway, I definitely think that's where we, we assign the city side. For the Bronx law, so.
It's an occasion. Yeah, we're going to have to coordinate it with Wayne and John anyway, so that's fine. And I'll have, when we submit that final plan, before the, we do all that construction, we'll have those things done.
Just wanted to point them out.
Yeah, no, I think there are different points, Jamie, for sure.
You know, I feel like, well, first I should say, often though, very excited to see this. We talked about this with your planning because I think this is, this is great to breathe life into this corner. It's very public character. A lot of people come, I'm out of time, excited for Joe to have a nice home to live in there and fix it up. But, but incidentally, like potentially moving that, if you can, move the driveway a little bit closer to Water Street, even though it says no parking, a lot of people park there when it's a really busy night when they're, you know, looking for a spot and they can't seem to get one that, that seems really convenient and then becomes, I think, a public nuisance and trying to get out onto Water Street. It impedes the view and it becomes quite dangerous. We talked a little bit about this with your planning where I think, you know, addressing the sidewalk, the surrounding board, and best, and all of this is going to be helpful for that corner. It happens to be, I think, one of the busiest side streets.
Yeah.
Friday and Saturday night. And I've witnessed many times where people, where people are coming out of the, you know, the pointer or the Mexican restaurant and maybe they aren't thinking clearly, so.
What are you suggesting?
I can see there.
Charlie, what's, what are you suggesting? So I, I think a couple of things to address that, Charlie, for sure. I think if we move that parking space down a little bit, right, then it's going to have a curb cut there now that's going to be more defined. Part of the problem with this whole area, it's like swimming with open, with no curbs right there. So those curbs now all become more defined there and it's clearly much shorter now to the corner, even though that is a really nice sign display on the corner. I think that, I think that will help.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything you can do to improve that, even like.
Yeah.
Need to suggest adding anything, anything to make it look better and more visible. That's true, it's, it would be helpful. Just see somebody getting here.
Is there any conversation with DPS where that section of street stands with the streets and sidewalks plan? I mean, it definitely looks like it's older, they discussed maybe plans in the future for Center Street and how would that, would that at all correlate with this in any way?
I don't know, they haven't checked in, you know. So I, I don't know what their, they have a whole series of, I have that Center Street, Water Street on.
I apologize, I don't know the answer to that, but I know that they did not bring up any of this typically.
It's not on the.
Yeah, it's not, it's.
It would have come up in the conversation, man, it doesn't look like it's their term.
It's in, it's in pretty good shape, right, as in comparison to other streets.
No, it's.
Yeah.
I have, I have two quick questions. And I apologize for asking again, but could you just go back to the elevation? Primary residential.
So bottom left drawing, the door that you're seeing where Andy's cursor is, that's the primary, or call it the front entry for the residential unit. That tower would be part of the, the left subdivision is all residential in use. They would enter there and go up the stairs. If we go to the right bottom drawing, the door that you see next to the vertical lift. Yeah. That would be the entry to the commercial space. That's the primary. And then if we go, did you want to say the back went to?
Yeah, thank, thank. My other question is, did there, did she have any? Big bumps here, where?
Again, we'll go, likely go on the back side of the property. If there were a back, backside, I would actually argue it's the gable end closer to Liberty Street side, you're going to argue, because that's, but it's also closer to another, another. So that's very tight there. So whether it's on the stair side that we've introduced, it's probably the better side in place.
I have a couple of comments. One, first thing is, I love this, I have these all over my desk. Great ideas come from sketches like this.
Andy was his idea.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just implemented it.
It's easy to change, right? The second thing, I'll agree with Charlie, I think breathing in the life of this building looks fantastic, right? Just cleaning it all up, I think I, I live around the corner and up the way and I walk there, blocking and just look at it and it's just like, it's just tired. The road is, I mean, and on weekends, that's true, although I'm walking. There is some interesting entering on and off, and maybe that'll solve some of that. I'll also say the sidewalks are expensive, you know, we're doing the backups and her foot is just, so hopefully, you know, it doesn't all happen.
Hopefully he's under.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, I mean, that's, I don't know. I mean, you know, if anybody watched the news tonight, you know, all the lumber's going to go up twenty percent. So, you know, we'll see what that has.
That's fine.
Open it up, open comment. Comment? Okay. Most public comment. Corrected for. You could use a little system scrolling through our.
I think, I think the conditions that you said up in here makes sense. The clarification, I think, I would like to work with the chair after the board vote tonight, just in terms of the wordsmith thing, just because we're trying to capture a little of you on this, the shifting of the parking spaces. So I want to make sure that in that wordsmith thing, we're capturing that. But in essence, as you're saying, when we set up, it was two conditions that we would basically be saying in the ready decision. And by the way, this is clarification, Rick brought this up. But just for clarification for all members, especially the newer members, there's a provision that was had in this only a couple of years back that basically says that all these, all the times that we're reviewing these special permits and such. We should be in embarrass, we should be looking at, or should be looking at the sidewalk conditions for the property and providing improvements. There's a couple of the caveat to that, the trigger being if it's an additional housing unit that's being added to the property or expected for some of that units, you know, in well work. And so, could that property, so at the end of the day, the question here is essentially, is that the trigger? And there's a full wholesale improvement of that sidewalk versus the other improvements that essentially do not include the short, oh, the shortage, it's a segment of brick here. This segment right here might not be brick, given that sidewalk provision isn't triggered. But I think there's a reasonable way of approaching the conditions here for these improvements. By understanding, concept of the board has been discussing here about the spaces, but I do think that requires a wordsmith in the final decision, but it would require and allow the outpouring to shift from the plan that was submitted here. This, this curve, you don't have to look further down, thereby allow a little more space genuinely brushing of the entrance here. And then, of course, knowing those conditions, all that sidewalk being upgraded to brick, separate the sidewalk. Triggered, change the second, so it's a property, the city's obligation, so relatively straightforward.
Do we really need to have those of these options in here because?
Yeah, sorry.
Five, six, seven, eight, because it'll happen. But it's part of our condition.
Yeah, this, this is part of the wordsmith target. So first of all, I want to capture, separate from the language, we have here, and anything we might put in the staff which is the condition, the language relative to shifting the space, it's just a bag, of course, bound here without the need for it coming back. I'd like to get here. We would obviously be obvious in the whole service, we see that device plan, we see the plan, the nation, the outpouring, we have to go back here, but. You need to brush this across here again. But to your point, I, to me, this would be relatively simple. Condition that can say, yeah, in the event of, that shows that, you know.
I was, I was even just going to say, you don't have to have any ifs in here.
Yeah.
You could just put in five, six, seven, eight, because if, if it happens.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It doesn't affect it anyway, it's something that.
Yeah, I just, I think what we're trying to just make clear, if it is beneficial state here though, is the, to clarify the little provisions that are still required, even if that provision isn't right.
Exactly, exactly. You know, we could pause it all.
Right.
And, and I would also, maybe, maybe the vote should say, about this offset parking spaces, Jamie tried out the one fourth over there of the, and then we need some space to get around it. So maybe we should just specify a number, whether it's. What would be the right number to get past that railing and get between the car and the. Repeat from the house?
The only area that I, I am not certain of is that's in the slab. Is how much we have to move it back? Because of that diagonal line on the back, I think that's the only thing that I just want to make sure we're comfortable. Say we can move down two feet counter blade if it has to be.
Two, yeah.
Yeah.
How much space do you have in the parking, parking space is nine feet wide. Much space is there for cars?
You need at least one, one. And so I think the assumption is that we have at least thirty-six inches of that at the back. So that would be the beginning and earliest space, I would put it, of course, be.
I don't think it has to be that.
It doesn't have to be thirty-six because the, because the car is.
Right. The car, the car doesn't go.
So I, that's what I'm saying, thirty-six inches from the wall.
Yeah, somewhere between two and three feet, I was thinking.
Yeah.
Well, thirty-six inches from the wall, I see, yeah.
Okay, okay. That's a little easier to guide.
But then, then it's clear what the plans can show.
Another way for people to get in is to walk to the front of the car and that, there's a way to do it.
But, but for somebody visiting a business.
Yeah, so it's not.
They're not going to be parked.
No, but the.
So to get there and get you.
Thirty-six inches seems like a good target.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the condition that was kind of by thirty-six inches of the building here, these spaces here, something to shift and.
And the better rear line.
Yeah, yeah.
This is quite a. Kind of briefly. The tree commissioner there, they're going to talk.
A brief synopsis is is certainly adding.
We could move to approve the DOD special permit, excuse special permit, special permit for not declaring in the ITI of special permit application submitted for one center street. Uh, with incorporating the draft findings that we reviewed tonight, as well as the uh conditions that we specified.
Uh, again, so I know also all that in within this backboard as well as the modified conditions.
Thank you very much.
After advanced skills. It's submitted comments for March fifth. March nineteenth.
Can we separate motions?
Yeah.
So. So I'm going to approve the um three, five, twenty, twenty five minutes. As the amendment. Second. And I just, I'll stay in. To extension. Move to approve the three nineteen, twenty, twenty five minutes.
Uh, any other opening? The only updated one to mention was, and I know we talked previously, and I mentioned this previously, but I had a timeline, it's probably the most important part of FEMA maps. Um, it's one of the changes that would be required by federal law to update uh in a few months. And so my hope would be to get based on the timelines involved. Meetings, there are activities involved, sort of. Um, is in essence to use the same night that the planning board has been in the city council for a whole year. Well, it's really largely driven by private and the federal government, so that everybody who has properties and active jobs can get blood insurance. So it's not necessarily a choice of it. We can say, well, we're not going to adopt those changes for the federal government. Um, and that would be explained, I think, more so in the city council, although that discussion, but one of the things I wanted to do before we pushed out that amendment and into the city council packet, advertise for here, the planning board, was to be able to display what that looks like to people, because obviously people that wants to be embarrassed. There are different websites and platforms where the data is available, but it's a little confusing and um they're not all perfect, although there's one that shows sort of whole screen. What we're trying to do, I just want to show real brief, just so you can see what we're gonna uh provide to you in the city council is uh this is not the, this is where it's going to go. Um, uh, but is, this is my map, this is by having paid to be completely used, I'm just starting really quick where it's going to go, but in the layers tab, um, what you notice is there we have these called themes up here, and so the early imagery is the first thing you see. If you happen to be, you know, let's say we're in the downtown here, but you're sort of a walk. When you're in there, you can choose if you wanted to go down this whole legend, uh but one of the things that you could skip right to, trying to talk about layers, zoning. And so one of the layers in there, um. Yeah, one lane at it. So at any rate, um, what we're trying to do is to show the before and after. Um, you can sort of, you can sort of see the the era of the zone that is in. Um, we could also turn off just for clutter. So we can now see this is the A zone. So thi- this is where we see the distinction between these zones. Um, we're going to try to mark it a little bit, explain a little better. But um, but this is showing the existing maps, and what we want to show is uh so that someone can basically toggle on and off. There is a federal, there's a page that um we looked at, or provided by the government, that um allows you to kind of scroll, I didn't plug here, but yeah, it allows you to kind of bring up, drag a bar back and forth, and see the before and after, which is nice. But unfortunately, what I found is the way that they have that page set up is they, they're not showing uh when you do some of it, they're not showing all the before and after tiles, it almost appears as if there's no blood data in the proposed for a certain area of that tile. So unless they're correcting that, I don't think it's a good tool for us to do it, because uh and without going to it, you'd understand better by sure. And anyway, what we're trying to do is to make sure that as we're explaining the required FEMA maps. And FEMA has changed the delineation of where, you know, these areas are. So that people can zoom in and see a given area where people, the property, what is changing. Yeah, sorry, for destination, you can essentially toggle on and off, it's, you know. Uh, it's not quite as, you know, savvy or as smooth as a sort of scrolling bar that goes back and forth, it was on another page, which we could send a link to as well. My only concern about that page was just to try to explain to people and have just a link sent out to you with the zoning amendment, which is all text. Um, the idea of looking at these maps and not, and be confused by this federal page that's showing the tiles. But as you drag the bar across, some of the tiles are showing the before and after properly, some of them because the tile has not changed. They don't show the old tile in there properly, so it's confusing because you might actually think there's no blood zone in that area, that makes sense. So um unless we're bringing the primary tool or something else like that, it works better. Uh, my primary tool, I think, for officer locally is to show it properly on maps here, that's, we're going to use it permitting. Um, so the goal is, we're good in the PC right now, uh Lopez over there to transfer the data, extract it from FEMA displayed on here properly, there are also the communities by doing a similar thing, each community may want to say differently, I understand, but um, but we're just looking to show basically the before and after. So what we want to do is have a theme here. When you, when you go to the link that we're going to offer, it's the same as this my map, you know, link page here, but it's going directly to that theme that says, you know, FEMA before and after, right? So you can really go right there, not have to work on any other options there, which you might see in the legend here, layers, it's only those two layers essentially on and off. They got to see those, and then you can beat on that if you want, but that's in essence what I wanted to do before setting up the amendments. It's not confusing to people, because the first question I'm going to get from people is what are the map changes? And as of right now, what we have posted was that these are PDFs of the FEMA maps, which are drawing plates. Yeah, it's just sort of talking a lot off. They're better maps, used to be, but as PDFs, but they're still not as as much as we get our own dynamic maps. So uh at any rate, that, the the sum result, I guess, is that councillors, by sponsorship, but again, the next coming package, the council's adjusted dates, they're they're age of days. Um, but then advertise and utilize the same, we on assignment, back between seven and eight. Uh, to do that hearing, uh, probably have decided to hold, you guys. Uh, but mainly to take advantage of the city council's timeframe, uh I understand based on their schedule, budget cycle, everything else they have in their plate, the difficulty. Uh, it's like, you want to make sure that so that's like the best timing, wouldn't uh require us to use a meeting day necessarily, and certainly, um, you know, to add any more process or anybody, so that.
So that's, is that May seventh?
That, that would be May seventh as well.
So, so you would have to have the map even going out or something like that, so in terms of advertising, to show where the line is.
Yeah, Chris, so actually the maps are already there, there's the PDF, they're referencing the tiles, uh that will be, those will be posted. So in my map page here, it's more of a display side of it. So for formalities, all of that will be there, referencing those tiles and those, all those those tiles, which are all you know, the whole title numbers, uh that will all be there, and that will be mostly clearly enough. Um, you know, as it is in the zoning today, actually, it's just that for illustrative purposes, it's not quite as convenient. So what I want to be able to do is push out, here's the amendment, and here's a convenient link to looking at the before and after on a web, essentially, on a webpage. Rather than saying, here's a PDF of, you know, if you want to see before and after, we have those posted on our website, we just, they've shown us. But it's not, it's inconvenient, it's just sort of, you know, opening up two PDFs and then having to look back and forth.
So here's another suggestion, I don't, I don't understand if Steve can do this. We did this endorsement, um, we actually created, once we had those two, two layers, we created a polygon. It was just.
Oh, yes, I did talk to Steve about that. Uh, there was a preference there, then we had the conversation, it, we could circle back on that. There wasn't a uh initial preference for doing like a before and after comparison now, so that he felt that was a little bit, it is a little bit more involved.
And that targeting is, is sometimes hard for people who remember, you know, who have scary appointments, they work.
Yeah, well, first, if you were going on my app here, you went to print a page, you know, print the page, you know, with the, with the before, print the page of the after, you know. Um, yes, that's true, and I can talk to Steve about it a little more, he was a little bit concerned about the, the time processing involved. He felt that was a little bit involved, and I, my initial inclination based on discussion, but we, we didn't feel it was necessary here to do that. Um, certainly that, that question might come up, we might, you know, we talk to that direction, but it seemed unbalanced, it was not worthwhile, we do that per se. Um, the difference of the option there, so depending on the board, depending on what we get, the sketch might be, all right, can we try to get a map that shows, here's the red that goes from this to that, the problem is um, there's going to be color coatings like that over the map, because it's sort of like, you know, is this AD or these, and I'm not saying, you know, what's up, it's going to go, but it might be a little bit of a mishmash there too, so that's going to create another layer that someone's looking at, so you got the existing, the proposed, and then the sort of comparison one. Uh, mixed thoughts, I guess.
I think the thing that's most important, the most of concern.
Yeah.
It's not whether you're going from one of these only, others, these are one of these only, but if you're not in a place.
Now you are. Yes, yes, yes. Um, I'll talk to Steve again and see if there's, you know, he's also looking at the data, and we were tracking the data. FEMA, you know, putting it far, you know, area of the fish. Um, but we're not as to be, but it's certainly the region that they do, but we have to focus on right now, so. Um, so we're working with him, we can see what can be done about that, and we'll certainly try to do that, uh I just don't, it seemed like it might be a little more involved.
The other way you could do it, you just go off, yeah, and have the map for both layers.
Right, right. And I don't know if many people will be interested individually, it's probably is necessary to sneak out the live post. This seems, it's not a lot of latitude we would have, because we're affecting the same to our.
Probably a lot of community, a lot of parcels are partially influenced on that, will be more partial in the future.
Yes.
So it's not going to get legal, that's, so it's, you know, going from the right side of the wall to the street to the south side.
Right, well, you worried it at all. Yeah, I'll talk to Steve about that again, see uh after he's got the broad data, he's been looking at, if you want to compare to the contenders. Sort of, but um, so I, I don't see what you can do in that case, it might be sort of third, like showing or sort of uh map, just be prepared to say just kind of show the what happened, uh what had changed. Perhaps the legend played on kids like this, this one for that.
And and the, the other advantage of that is well, one thing you can use, you can, you can use the GIS to print out a holistic parcels that are effective change.
Yes, yes, um, it's a, I do want to. I think, what about that, how much would you tell them looking forward, well, how much of like? But he's square P, you know, it can be a little more radical, we're trying to do that for every decision or party might be interested, so um I can see what can be done, um, but it does become a little bit involved. So I, let's see. And they certainly, you know, there's like a mile of the coastline, you know. So, and then we also want to so using my app, uh, the, I can probably the second, I guess I don't.
So Andy, what are we actually doing? Proving, we're incorporating the map.
We're incorporating the updated FEMA, so all the map, like these boundaries that FEMA says are, those are of different types.
We have. So we're not analyzing the map for its accuracy, we're adopting it as what we report uses.
Correct, correct, as it's actually directed by the federal government, if people aren't there, they're going to get.
Basically, replacing the data that happened in first zone.
With the new, yeah, yeah, it's like, there was a zoning boundary, you know, an old. So we should nominate someone to check every parcel. Brian was volunteering.
Oh.
Well, what again, what, I see, it's actually been automated, it's just, it does become a little bit involved, and then there's sometimes, then things sort of like, you know, it's a random hole, like how many other things are wrong or who are other people that are confused and more questions there, so, so it's just, it's, it's a question of like simplicity and clarity versus, you know, all that. Uh, but I'll, I'll send out links to those things, I'll even, you know, I include the link to the other one to the front page, I just, I wanted to include that caveat, that part of the reason I don't want to lie on the illustrations, it's a little confusing, because when you drag it, you're, you're, it's not carrying the before and after. And and I, that, that's because they didn't change anything, uh but they should still display it upon zones, that concerns me, because if I send people there, they're going to think, oh, well, no, you don't, and that's not really an accurate depiction of the before and after, so. Um, anyway, Diane and I were both a little, you know, concerned about, you know, you learn that reason, but anyway, we'll uh.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
We can go on, we're going to put my map now, it'll have the most updated.
Right now, it has the current uh FEMA map, so proposed ones, and what we're, we're. We'll, we'll send out a link saying, you know, here's very good, ready, is, it should be on my map, it'll be in here as a layer, uh I don't probably say something.
We can't access.
Right now, you can access uh on the city's website, I'll show you right quick, uh only the PDFs, so if you go to um like the preliminary flood maps, um so right now we have PDFs, those, the problem is, when, when they, when there's no change, because on the other page, they don't show them like. What we're doing is essentially taking, uh this is just a, this is actually not a good. An example of the PM, so this is the sort of old school, you know, black and white plan from FEMA, it's got a color coding, if they're showing where some of the zones are. But as you can see, displaying this on our map, where someone can zoom in it out and see their own properties, it'll be a lot easier for them to try to, you know, compare where they fall in this. Yeah, so before and after, just because. We're still required essentially to reference these specific maps, it's just that for illustrative purposes and all the, you know, day to day functions. We're relying on my map, the digital version of that to do it, but the federal government still relies on, like, these official maps. So in essence, all the tiles are still exactly and already there. I just want to make sure people can see it clearly enough and don't, don't get overwhelmed and frustrated by the fact that the department's only, yeah, so.
Okay, they got a lot of ground stuff.
Well, when we actually start going to the, oh, the federal government took down this webpage, and that webpage is. Uh, anyway, that's coming along, and my goal again is to take advantage that night, so they hope you and um city council, what I've done over their meetings, and stay on schedule and take advantage of this. They do adjust the schedule there. Uh, some of those maps, the tile dates that were affected, I think they're twenty twelve, yeah, uh that was a lot, I think, updated, uh. So, so that's it.
Any other comment? Yeah, I will. Create a motion for.
Move to adjourn?